Ladies and gentlemen, I now declare this regular meeting of the Galt City Council duly open for the transaction of business. Liz, would you please conduct the roll call?
Counselor Hame?
Here.
Hame?
Here.
Claire?
Here.
Roboy?
Here.
Meredith?
Here. Before we get to silent prayer, I wanted to just make a short announcement. Many of you are aware that Councilmember Matt Garcia from the city of Fairfield was essentially mortally wounded by a gunshot wound yesterday. We wanted to express our heartfelt sympathies to his family and to all the residents of Fairfield, and we ask that you keep them in your prayers when we move to silent prayer. So at this time, please stand for silent prayer, followed by the flag salute presented by Cub Scout PAC Six.
Cub Scout, attention. Cub Scout, advance. Cub Scout, halt. Cub Scout, prepare to post colors. Post colors. Salute. Will you please join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Two. Cub Scout dismissed.
Liz, would you please read our video statement?
Yes. This meeting of the Galt City Council is being videotaped in its entirety and will be cable cast without interruption on Metro Cable 14, the Government Affairs Channel, on the Comcast, Shore West, and Strategic Technologies Cable Systems. Tonight's meeting can be seen on Channel 14 and will also be webcast at www.sacmetricable.tv this Friday and Saturday mornings at 9:00 a.m. A VHS copy is also available for checkout from any library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address council should fill out a speaker identification form and give it to the clerk. Please speak into the microphone when addressing council and state your name for the record. And I might add, we are live video streaming this council meeting.
Agenda approval additions and/or deletions. I have a request from Councilmember Roboy to pull item seven off of the information consent calendar and place it under Public Works Department, item number four, so that the two items can coincide together because Councilmember Roboy will have to recuse himself. That's okay with the rest of the council?
It's okay with me.
Which item number? I'm sorry.
It's item seven on the consent calendar.
Okay.
Any other additions and/or deletions?
I have none.
I have none.
Nope. All right. Public comment?
Under Government Code, Section 54954.3, members of the audience may address the council on any item of interest to the public or on any agenda item before or during consideration of the item. Please fill out a speaker sheet located on the table inside the entrances to the council chambers and forward the completed speaker sheet to the city clerk prior to addressing the council. We request that you state whether you live within the Galt city limits or the county area. A maximum of five minutes is allowed for each speaker. Al Baldwin?
Good evening, Al Baldwin. A concerned citizen of Galt, and Galt's a town of character, and I want to thank you very much for putting on the wonderful Olympic, Stephanie's Olympic event. I don't know how else you can call it, because it was just wonderful, and I wanted to thank the people that did it. It was Stephanie Brown, Traptan, she showed her gold medal and everything. It was just wonderful, and I want to thank Liz and the people that helped you, and also Boyce Jeffries, and a lot of the people that helped you. And I tell you, this was probably one of the biggest, the bestest, and the mostest that I've seen in a long time. I would say at least there was a thousand people there, and it was so organized and so well-run. You did a terrific job, both of you, and my thanks to you, and I'm sure Stephanie loved it. I mean, it was just beyond imagination. It was so great, and...
Give them a hand for all their hard work.
Yeah, it was. It was great. Wonderful. And at that same park, we're going to use it again this Saturday, September 6th, from 2:00 to 6:00. It's called Diversity Fair, and it's going to be wonderful. I've said it before and mentioned it. It's going to be so exciting. You're going to see all kinds of different people out there, businesses in Galt, dancers and singers and marching bands and everything. It's going to be wonderful from 2:00 to 6:00. So be there and enjoy it. It's Carillion and Walnut, and it's right on the corner. And if you get lost, just come up Walnut, you see all the cars. It's going to be big time there. It's going to be wonderful. And there's one other thing I wanted to mention, and Mr. Meredith brought it up, and it was about councilmen in Fairfield. It was Matt Garcia, and he was 21 years old when he was elected, and he was 22 years now when he passed away. He was taken off life support, and I want to tell you now that the people that run for council, and a lot of people think this is a piece of cake, and you get to be known, and you can promote what you feel is right for the city and push it, but you never, never know what's really going to happen. I commend you people up there for the bravery and your ideas and thoughts that you want to help this city, but I'll tell you, I was so shocked to see such a young man taken the way he was, and I'm thinking it's for his beliefs and what he wanted to change that city into, and get rid of the gangs, and it was just amazing that the thoughts that he had, and my prayers go to his family. And I tell you, he's just a young, nice-looking guy, and I think he was one of the youngest people in California that got on the council. But there's not much you can do. You guys, I credit you all, because I know it's not the easiest position to be in and to express your ideas and to get them out, because there's always somebody out there ready to knock you and hit you, and I think Tim Roboy's not here, but he had his tires slashed, and he had other things done, and other council members before you, two or three back, even get threatening phone calls. I'm not sure if you do, but it's not an easy job, and it's something that it takes a very special person to be on in this council in Galt, and I commend you all for it, and I thank you for it. So that's about it.
Thank you, Mr. Baldwin.
Rick Walters? Rick Walters? Are you outside? There he is.
Good evening, council. Thank you. Rick Walters, and I live in the city of Galt. City governments have special agendas located within each and every city government. These special agendas have only one purpose. It is to continue increases to city governments and expand financial expenditures. These agenda policies, these agenda policies use their position within the city government to promote and defend increased fees. I believe they call fee increases a way of life, and the agenda speaks loud and clear. Learn to live with it or move. When cities promote their budgets in the five-year and beyond financial forecast, what they are really saying is, we are going to build a bigger government, and we will keep asking the taxpayers to pay for it, because this is what we were hired to do, recommend. When it comes to fee stabilization or reducing fees charged by cities, city staffs fall silent and do not recommend fee reduction at all, ever. The word "recommend" means to present as worthy of acceptance or trial. The top seven moneymakers of any city staff would have you believe that increases to fees is necessary, and without this continued increases, cities would cease to exist, employees would leave, and the cities would turn to decay. We often hear from our city advisors that other cities have higher rates and pay their employees higher wages, so we should also. Cities feed off of one another to promote their special interest group agenda. It's called promotion by design. They have found a loophole in the common sense approach to fee gathering by cities. No longer are fees charged by cities proportional to the property owner's consumption or usage of service. If you use less, you should pay less, but the agenda of this city is, if you use less, you should pay more. The problem is, these groups do not understand that they are promoting their own individual agenda. When city management negotiates for city payroll rates to be increased for hourly wages, what they are really saying is this, if you increase the bottom, you must increase the top. I believe the word used was compaction. In other words, the rich get richer, the poor get left behind, and the ratepayer pays for everything. Now, why do I say this? Look at the sewer costs for 2001. Look at what it's projected to be in 2008, 2009. $853,000. That's a 200% increase. Look at the water. Cost for water 2001. $237,000. Look at what it's projected to be in 2008, 2009. $713,000. Another 200% increase. And by the way, I'm not talking about maintenance and operation. This is just personnel costs that's gone up that much, and you should be aware of this. This is pretty astounding to me. Before this council approves another recommendation, this year for increases to city employees, pay or our utilities, this council must look into this matter and justify why these increases are so high, and what can be done to stabilize our utility rates for the future. Do what average homeowners do. If you can afford it, buy it. Otherwise, forget it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walters.
Thank you, Rick.
Reuven Epstein?
Yes, I'm Reuven Epstein, and I live in Galt, have for 32 years now. Couple of weeks ago, you had notices in the paper and talked about it at the meetings about enforcing the ordinance on garage sale signs and other signs around town. It turned up on the news on one of the stations, at least in Sacramento. I suspect they weren't trying to be real complimentary on our coverage. I have a suggestion that maybe there is a way of making a win-win out of this. Galt is proposing more recycling, more sustainability. Garage sales are a form of recycling. Instead of people throwing out stuff, they get somebody else to buy it, use it for a while, maybe then they'll sell it again. I've seen more cars around Galt, because they can't put up signs, so they're parked on one place with big fluorescent signs on them, which doesn't look real great, but probably also doesn't help their sale a whole lot, because they only have one sign in one place. I don't have the patience to have garage sales, so I don't. I donate it to places if I have stuff I don't want, or if somebody in the family is going to use it. But there have been times when just driving around, I'll see a sign, and I say, oh, I'll stop, and maybe I get something, maybe I don't. And I know a lot of other people go what they call garage selling. They'll go out on a Saturday morning, and they'll drive around, look for the signs. Perhaps there is a way that we can put up city authorized posts, like a four-by-four post with a one-foot wide board on it, add various corners where it'd be considered appropriate. The city can produce and have an authorized garage sale sign that's the only kind that's permitted, so we know that the city is aware of it. If necessary, I guess you could charge a $5 fee for doing it, or something like that, to help cover some of the costs. That way, people could have access to the information. It could be better controlled, because if you use a standard form, it would say garage sale, or state sale, yard sale, whatever, have the address, if necessary, a phone number, and the date's clearly on there, rather than just Saturday and Sunday, and then you've got to figure out which Saturday and Sunday out of 52 weeks in the year they're talking about. And that may hopefully self-pleasing that they come down right after the sale. But we might be able to get some positive publicity then, that we're trying to help people recycle their goods and still have things look nice. Some of the confusion will affect me, because I put up signs for different lines functions at times of the year, and I'm not sure where they're going to be able to go or not go now. I don't know if I go to code compliance, if they can tell me for each location if it's okay or not. So I certainly don't want the Lions Club getting stuck with a $100 fine, because I screwed up and put up a sign where it wasn't supposed to be. But the main thing, I think, is garage sale notices, and if we could work out something like that, I think that it would be a feather in the cap of the community, that we're promoting recycling, and we're doing something active and positive to try to help it, and also have it better controlled. That's all I can think of right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Epstein, I want to thank you for your suggestions of the post, because it's refreshing to get somebody up here not just complaining about an issue, but actually coming up with a solution, a potential solution, as you have, so I think it's very much worth looking at, and I will look at it, but I thank you for taking the time and the effort to speak on it and bring us a solution to the issue.
Well, we did something like that when people were concerned about all the cars for sale in the parking lot of Say Mart and on the street, and there were various discussions, and it worked out that what they chose as an answer was allowing the people to have the cars for sale during the day, but no parking overnight, so they couldn't just park them there and leave them there for two weeks, or whatever they could get away with before caps tagged them. And it seems to work reasonably well, so it helps recycle the cars, too.
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Tracy Gross?
Hi, Tracy Gross. I live in the city. I'm here again to remind you guys about the Stand Down coming up, and they will start setting up this next week, and it'll take the whole week to get things set up. And for any of you that haven't heard about this, this is Veterans Who Help Homeless Veterans, try to get them any of the services they need to help get them off the streets and that. One of the things I think I forgot to mention, as I've come up before, is that we're part of this area, so if you guys, anybody knows of anyone who is a homeless veteran that needs any kind of services, let us know. We'll do whatever we can to get them up there. It's also open to any veteran that needs any kind of service, that can come up on a day timer, you know, come up on Saturday or Sunday to get any kind of services that they might need. So that's open to them, too. Besides the military issue that my sister and I helped distribute, you know, during this weekend, we've also been in charge this year of the Comfort Packs, which are nice packs they put together with nice-sized soap and shampoo and deodorant and stuff to send the guys off with. And this year, we've got donations of everything except for the shampoo. And after one of my meetings, the meetings here recently, when I talked about this, Sheri Daly came up to me and said that her troop, 311, would like to take on the project themselves. And then a few days later, I got another call from Sheri, where a young girl in her troop decided to take on the project herself. So she's come here tonight to tell you guys about her efforts and what she's done so far, and her name's Mia Thornton.
Hi, my name is Mia Thornton, and I am in troop 311. I'm helping to collect 400 bottles of shampoo for the homeless veterans in Galt. I would just like to say the kind generous people of Galt have donated 176 bottles of shampoo. We still need 234 more bottles. There will be an ad in the newspaper that will have a phone number that you can call if you would like to donate any bottles or money.
And Leah, were you selling those for a dollar apiece? Is that how it worked? I thought I saw you guys over at Rayleigh's. Was that what it was, a dollar? Because I know we bought some, and I thought it was great. Excellent, excellent job.
I want to add real quick one more thing, that we have, we talked to the camp commander today, and we're going to make arrangements for Sheri Daly to bring a couple of her girls, including Mia, up to maybe get to actually volunteer during lunch or something on Saturday. And if not, they're going to at least get to come up and go on a tour. And then she'll come back afterwards to one of the meetings and let you guys know how everything went, okay?
What's your deadline for reaching your goal, date-wise?
Um, the night.
The night?
Mm-hmm.
September? Okay. Thank you, Mia.
Shannon Brumwell?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, members of the city council and city staff. I have before me a letter that was sent to the Galt City Council back in November of 2007. As there was no response to this letter, I will read excerpts from this letter so that it becomes part of the public record, instead of being characteristically swept under the rug and ignored. As this letter is four pages long, it would take more time than I have to read in its entirety. However, I do have several copies of the original letter for any who would like to have a copy. This letter is from the Dove Attorney Firm, specifically Ellen C. Dove. I am writing at this time to make an effort to persuade the city council to take this opportunity to return to that course which the community itself has repeatedly said is best for all concern. When you made the decision to remove the Delta Greens project, when you made this decision as a council, I do not know whether you considered the issues of conflict of interest, lack of due process, injustice to the property owners, specifically Aurora Capital LLC, and the full long-term impact upon the voters and residents of the city of Galt, but I hope you will now. Of course, the owners were damaged when you determined to eliminate this vital project. The Delta Greens owners have spent millions of dollars on engineering, environmental studies, and other various tasks performed during the last decade as requested by the city of Galt. Anyone who has followed the rationale and activities of the project owners must recognize they have assisted the city with many studies intended to help find practical solutions for upgrading the city sewer system and complying with the state requirements where it is deficient. Delta Greens directly and indirectly has paid for engineering reviews of various infrastructure problems. Finding solutions for these problems deferred for so many years has become difficult with an increase in budget needs. But without a sufficient revenue stream to solve the deferred maintenance and reconstruction issues, these community deferred solutions simply will not happen. The consequences for the city's infrastructure needs and cash flow are readily apparent here to even the most casual observer. A measure of impact of the loss of the well-documented future income from this project is no more readily apparent than in the effects on those members of the community on fixed incomes. They have voiced their concerns regarding the alleged necessity of increased fees for essential fundamental city issues. Such increases would be unconscionable while the economy is in a downward spiral and property taxes are declining as a result. Quite simply put, the loss of income from this project will not sit well with taxpayers and voters. Three members of the council have, as a group, consistently violated the Brown Act and made decisions outside the public council meeting. Voters and non-voters alike are disturbed at this aberration of the democratic process. While they recognize the right of council members to share a philosophy with the nature conservancy, they rightfully hold the city, the council members, to a standard that does not permit advancing the agenda of that group or any other. Public deliberation and consideration are state-mandated requirements for municipal organizations. City council members cannot decide in advance to deny public input on any issue. Behind-the-scenes decisions will not carry weight within the community and will bring a most unpleasant form of attention to those who act in that manner. I have heard the elimination of the anchor high-quality Delta Green senior community was decided during a meeting which clearly violated the Brown Act. This occurred on January 15th, 2007, without providing adequate public notice of the intention to consider the matter, and without providing sufficiently articulated reasons for this drastic action. This stands in serious violation of both the Brown Act and the state and federal due process requirements. Despite an earlier, an opportunity earlier this year to correct this arbitrary and capricious error in regard to the GPU, the same three members repeated their obstructionist behavior and reaffirmed elimination of the project. And I'll stop there, because I am out of time. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for your time.
John Novak? Do you want to wait until the item, or do you want to speak now? Okay.
My name is John Novak. I live in the city. I'm applying as an alternate on the Commission on Aging. Back around January or February, I was riding my bicycle past high school, when a carload of children decided it would be fun to shoot me with a paintball gun. The first two hit me in the hip, and I didn't really feel them, because I had my jeans on. The third one hit me in the side, and I definitely felt that one. My wife, I called my wife, who called the police, and the officer arrived, I believe it was in a Bronco, and he did a terrific job. I mean, I was crying like a baby, not because it hurt, but I'm sure as, at least as Andrew can understand. I got through 18 months of Vietnam without a scratch physically. I am currently under care at a VA for PTSD, and I would like to apply for an alternate on the Commission on Aging. I cannot thank, the officer came up in a Bronco, so I'm not sure who it was, and I cannot thank him enough. I mean, I've had people come up in restaurants and interrupt me and my wife while we were eating and just say, thank you for your service, and I appreciate that more than words can say, but the officer actually told me, he said, I understand how you feel, and I almost stopped crying, and because I knew, he knew how I felt, and it meant more than words I could not put, I couldn't put together. It just meant so much to me, to what that officer said. He asked me twice if I was hurt. I told him no, that I was just, I was just crying, and I was crying like a baby, and because I got through Nam without any scratches physically. And so now, the medicine has acclimated to my body, and I would like to apply for the position as an alternate on the Commission on Aging, with the council's approval. position as an alternate on the Commission on Aging with the council's approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Novak.
Mr. Novak, I remember hearing about this story right after it happened and had some conversations with some people. And, you know, the general consensus was this was the type of an action that just makes people sick to their stomach. You know, just the blatant disregard for human beings' presence and the human beings' feelings, it just makes you sick to your stomach.
Well, I knew, I know they, I'm sure they knew, didn't know that I had been in combat, but I know for sure you understood where I'm coming from and, and I'm not sure about the other council members, but...
All of us here in this room appreciate your service to your country. And I think we all agree that you didn't deserve what happened to you.
Okay, thank you again.
And when we get to that item, you'll have my support.
Thank you very much.
Actually, I was going to ask, not knowing if you're going to stay the balance of the meeting, if there's any other comment, if we could go ahead and take care of that item in case you wanted to leave earlier.
Yeah, I would like to leave earlier. And I would like to thank, the officer came up in a Bronco, I think it was a Bronco. And he, he actually told me, he said, "I understand how you feel." And, I mean, I've had people come up to me and my wife in restaurants and say, "Thank you for your service." And Lord knows, I appreciate, I appreciate it. But for the officer to say, "I understand how you feel," meant more to me than, I cannot find the words to express the gratitude to that officer. And to the chief, I would like to thank, I don't know, if you could find the officer who did it, give my heartfelt thanks. Because he asked me twice if I was hurt and it wasn't, I wasn't crying because I was hurt. I was just crying because I got through NOM without any physical injuries. And I am currently under a VA for PTSD and, but like I said, the officer just did a terrific job. And, and I would like to thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion to appoint Mr. Novak?
Yes, I'd like to make that motion, but make sure in case anyone else was going to speak on the item since we're jumping ahead.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak on the appointment of the alternate to the Commission on Aging? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
And I move we appoint Mr. Novak to the alternate position.
I'll second.
Call for the vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Group 5-0.
Thank you very much.
Kathleen Amos.
My name is Kathleen Amos and I am a resident of the city and a business owner. And I'm also, wear several hats, as you all know, in this town. I'm here tonight to invite everyone to the fundraiser that will be held this Saturday night at the Littleton Community Center on September 6th at 7:00 PM. We are, it is a fundraiser to support Measure R, which is the anti-gang and anti-drug One Half Cent Sales Tax Initiative. It will add several new officers to our streets and two dispatchers to our police force as well as, including a school resource officer, which I think is very much needed and I think many people will agree it's very much needed. Tickets are only $15 apiece and I have some available with me tonight. So if anyone here needs one or if anyone, if I don't have enough to meet the need tonight, I will take down names and make sure that you do get your tickets. And I believe there may still be some tickets available to sell at the door, but I'm not quite sure about that yet. I also want to, so the other thing I wanted to say is that this council ran on a slow growth platform and many of the citizens of this small town, including me, are very proud of the work that you have done for the past two years. And I just want to tell you all, thank you for your hard work. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Amos.
Do we have any other speakers that would like to speak now under general public comment?
Good evening. My name is Luis Perez and I'm the executive director for an agency called Community Resource Project located in Sacramento and servicing the Galt area as well. In addition to that, we're the petitioners of a charter school called Novovision Academy. Many of you have probably heard about the academy. It's been in the making for four years. And only to find out that, most recently, we were notified by your city planning commission, or I'm sorry, your city planning division, that we are being denied, I guess, over parking in a facility we had selected, which we believe we did in conjunction with the planning department. And only to find out that we haven't met the requirements for parking according to the planning department. What we have done is we have applied for an appeal to that decision. But we have also asked for the, the planning commission to expedite our request. We have approximately 100 children that were signed up for this school with affidavits from the parents indicating, actually it was 102. Most recently, our count, it was about 107 that had indicated their interest in, in participating in this charter school. Our greatest concern is the fact that the time is running. We have actually, I know that the county board of education would perhaps reconsider pulling our certification for opening of the school. If we could get the property, we've met all the other requirements except for this one. And I think we could at least petition them to reconsider their point of our certification. But at this point, unless things are moved quickly, we're stuck once again in this quagmire of not being able to address the needs of these children. Now, let me just express the reason why this is so important to us. This has not been an issue about Community Resource Project nor has it been an issue about the people, the educators that have come together to put this academy together. It really has been about the people of this community who actually asked us to please try to do something for various reasons with regards to their children. One, they were continuously being told that Latino parents are not interested in the education of their children. Well, I'm here to tell you, after four years, if that isn't an expression of concern, I don't know what is. The second issue has been the fact that there you see an escalation of gang activity in this particular community. Very concerned about their sons and daughters as it relates to this issue. They can see it beginning to affect many families in your community. Needless to say, this is something that we, as an agency, attempt to respond to. At one time, you, someone from the city council, and I can't recall the person's name, so I apologize for that. But when you were closing down the concilio here, we were approached to see if we would be interested in providing services in this community. And we said yes, we would do an assessment, needs assessment, try to determine how we could possibly help. There were two things, two areas that we found very quickly that needed some attention. One was in the health area and we provided services here very quickly under the WIC auspices, which is the Women's, Children's and Children's Program, which we relocated some of our offices here on Fourth Street in order to be able to offer those services. Additionally, the other second need was this whole issue of education, particularly among the Latino community, who expressed time after time after time a need for a different type of school in order for them to be able to more participate, to be more readily able to participate in their child's education. Because of that, we attempted to go through the process and try to open up the school in the manner in which we're told things have to be done. After four years, after going back and forth, battering back and forth, it comes down to parking. I don't know about you, but I truly believe something that someone recently said, and I don't want to get partisan here, but, but quite frankly, it was Obama who recently said, "Government should be about being an enabler, not an inhibitor to, to progress and to meeting the American dream." And that it needed to start with, with self. And I truly believe that to be true. And that's the reason why we're here tonight, to petition you to reconsider the, or at least try to find a way that we could perhaps expedite this issue and try to make a final determination so that we could help these families.
Your time's up. Thank you very much.
Could I ask a question of process to, or attorney? The speaker has used some words like petition you and if she's making a formal request for formal actions. And assuming that is the case, what, what's going to be the process? Or have they made a formal approach to you and the planning commission and is that something that'll move forward to the council? Because I know, I'm not sure, I think a representative of yours or the other gentleman have contacted me recently to speak to me and maybe other council members. And I haven't replied yet because I wanted to find out tonight what formal process is underway, if any.
Councilmember Claire, the planning director made a determination and under the municipal code, that decision is appealable to the planning commission. The applicant has in fact filed an appeal and that will go to the planning commission for review. I also want to make you aware of the fact that, that, once the planning commission makes a determination, that decision may in fact be referred to the city council for a subsequent appeal hearing. So my recommendation at this point is for the council not to get involved in any discussion of this issue, to wait for the matter to be brought to you by appeal if in fact it is. And then with all the information and evidence before you, then that would be the opportunity for you to decide the issue.
Okay. So if, for myself anyway, that would be my response. If I was going to, since you're here, I'll just tell you personally, I will, I will postpone any discussions with you or your representatives until that time.
And I appreciate that. My issue is one of expediting that process and, and I guess that's not possible. So, is that what I'm hearing?
No, I'm, I'm certainly not saying that it can't be expedited. I'm sure that the planning director will work with the chair of the planning commission to ensure that it gets scheduled as, as quickly as it, as it can. What I was speaking to, ma'am, was just a matter of when would be the appropriate time for the city council to consider this issue on the merits.
And I appreciate that, sir. But we've been told that this can't be heard by the commission until October, even though there's a meeting in September.
If I could, it requires a notice public hearing. That notice, I have, the lead time on that is over, little over two and a half weeks to get to the newspaper. We still don't have a complete application. It also requires, requires mailed notice and staff has to prepare a report. The hearing would be on November, or excuse me, October 9th. And right now, if, unless we get all of the information from the applicant and reviewed a letter today that's being sent to them, because they did come in and file the appeal, I believe on Friday, they paid their fees, but they still have to address the issue of the 500-foot mailing radius map as well as area notice. So, you know, there may be a week difference, but that's really what we're talking about. And then I would still have to call and make sure I can get a quorum on an off-meeting date of the commission. So it's, it is, it is difficult. It's not as though we have procrastinated or pushed this out. It's, that is the regular meeting date and you do have notice of public hearing requirements and lead time because our newspaper publishes once a week and it has to have a 10-day notice, which turns out to be 14 days.
And just for point of information, is the site in question, what I'll call the pizza guy's?
That's correct.
Building?
That is correct.
If, if it's possible, and city attorney headed me off if I'm going in the wrong direction, I was curious as to when they were notified of, of this problem over parking.
I don't have the specific date. It was within the last week, week or two, week and a half.
Ms. Perez, weren't you guys looking to open your doors on September 15th? Is that what your goal was?
That is correct, sir.
You've already gotten all the green lights? I mean, the county board of education?
We, we had the green lights back in April. And consequently, because we are not able to get the facility. And there was some question about two other points, whether or not they would accept the affidavits or whether or not they would not. We have been in conversations with the city council because what they did is that they, and I don't know that you want me to go into all of this here, but I'd be more than happy to, to do that.
You don't have to, that's fine. I was just curious because I just want to see if you, because I, my understanding was, you know, one time you had it and then you didn't have it. And I was just curious to see where you were at in that process, if you'd gotten a final approval.
It's been, it's been a very arduous process. It has not been a friendly process. But I, again, what I'm saying to you is that the two other areas that we needed to have, two other areas that we had to reach, how can I say, that, where we had to meet certain conditions in order for us to open our doors, we truly believe we've met those two other conditions. One was a special ed certification. The people have even written a letter of apology that it didn't get it in on the time specified. And the other one was the signatures of, or I should say, the count of the number of children. We believe that the certification of parent signature should have been sufficient. So those are the points of contention. But above and beyond that, what we can't get over is obviously a facility.
Okay. I understand where you're coming from. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak? Okay, at this time, I'll turn it over to our city attorney to disclose any reportable action on a closed session.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, the city council met in closed session this evening on anticipated litigation and there was no reportable action.
And we are returning to closed session after we end the regular calendar to conclude closed session. Okay, that takes us to the information consent calendar. Just a reminder, we have pulled item seven and moved it under the regular calendar. So do we have a motion on the remainder of the information consent calendar?
I'll move the remainder.
I'll second.
Call for the vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Group 5-0. Takes us to presentations. Once the lights get dimmed a little bit, I'll go ahead and get started. This is a program that I've been talking about for the last six months to about a year. Vice Mayor Hands and myself attended a local government commission meeting where a representative from the city of Berkeley attended to discuss a solar financing plan that their mayor, Tom Bates, had basically conceived that utilized a financing mechanism that was similar to a financing plan that they're currently using to bury overhead utility lines underground. And the key to this financing mechanism is that it is completely 100% voluntary. So residents would essentially volunteer to join this assessment district, placing an assessment on their own property tax roll to pay for solar energy upgrades. So I'll go ahead and get started with my presentation. It will provide a little bit of background. Increasing costs are spiking the demand for energy efficiency by consumers. I think we're seeing it in the way that consumers are migrating more towards energy-efficient appliances, energy star-rated appliances. The threat of global warming has made Americans appreciate the need for sustainable energy options. I think that's something that we're seeing in our daily lives on a, on a large level. And in response, and because of the increased demand for renewable energy sources, the costs associated with energy efficiency have significantly decreased in the last five years. The city of Berkeley was making news recently by devising the plan that I, I just discussed, which was funding solar installations in existing homes through an additional assessment on the property. Berkeley's plan was held by many, many watchers of environmental issues here in California as the key to creating true solar participation. Legislators are working right now to clear state law hurdles that are in place that are currently hindering the implementation of programs like the city of Berkeley's. Within a year though, it appears that programs like this will move forward. Currently, the city of Berkeley is working with the city of San Francisco to create a community facilities district language law change that would allow this type of a program to be implemented. The city of Galt is in a unique position to create a groundbreaking program that would put our small city at the forefront of the clean energy movement. Galt is currently completing a general plan update that will decide how Galt will grow over a period ending in 2030. Our growth- Our growth plans call for the addition of 1,540 acres of residential development that will in turn bring 7,289 new housing units of varying densities at buildout. Expansion and the subsequent increase in Galt's population will result in an increase in our community's carbon footprint, something that it's been touched on in large volumes by our attorney general right now. And it's, it's really being passed on to communities like Galt to come up with a way to offset these carbon footprint increases. In order to offset this carbon increase and limit our impact upon regional air quality issues, Galt needs to find ways to reduce our carbon contribution. My proposal consists of three major components designed to increase energy efficiency and make carbon reductions possible at every home in our community. Part one of my program is the financing of the purchase and installation of photovoltaic power generation systems on existing homes. Now remember, this would be a volunteer program. Residents would apply to join the district and if their homes were found to be fit for a solar installation, being in regards to solar shading issues and roof structure, then the city would move forward with financing. Part two of the program is the financing of permanent energy efficiency upgrades to existing homes. And part three is requiring 20% of all new residential homes to be built to SMUDS solar smart home standards. The financing plan would break down like this. It would begin with the, it would begin with the application period. The city of Galt will open the application period in October of every even-numbered year, that's what I'm proposing, and it would begin in 2010, to willing property owners looking to finance the installation of a photovoltaic energy generation system on their home or to finance permanent energy enhancements to their homes. Application review period would be the second portion. During this point, the city staff would work with property owners and solar surveyors to determine whether or not all applicants for the financing of photovoltaic systems are eligible for participation in the district based upon solar shading concerns, overall roof area, and general condition and structure of the roof. The third component would be the application review period for the enhancement portion of my program. During the same timeframe as listed before, city staff will work with property owners and possibly utility personnel to determine if all applicants for energy enhancements are eligible for participation in the district based upon actual need for upgrade and once again, the overall condition of the structure. The fourth period would be the bonding period. At the conclusion of the application review period, city staff will present to council the overall program need, which would be the number of applications received in each category, based upon all eligible applications received. Council will then decide whether or not to begin bonding process to cover the financing need with specific numbers available after bids are received in step five. In step five, the city of Galt will solicit bids from qualified contractors to perform each component of the applied for upgrades and enhancements. For example, the city should solicit bids for all solar installations at once with one contractor performing all of the installations to save cost. This would also apply to all window replacements, toilet replacements, et cetera. Where enhancements can logically be performed by the homeowner, his or herself, the city should purchase required equipment for the homeowner and monitor the completion of the project. The sixth phase would be the construction period. Once a contractor is selected to perform each component of the required work, the city of Galt will oversee the completion of each project. Council should receive regular updates throughout this period on the process being made. The seventh period is the repayment period. Once construction is complete, the assessment district will apply the total costs and charges to the property. Now this is what Berkeley essentially created that is so revolutionary about, about the program. The homeowner will begin to make payments on the total finance amount through a process similar to property tax collection. I am proposing that the timelines for repayment are as follows. For a finance total of $0 to $4,000, I'm recommending a repayment period of five years. For total finance of $4,001 to $10,000, I'm recommending 10 years. For $10,001 to $15,000, I'm recommending 15 years. And the other two portions aren't listed on your screen, but $15,001 to $20,000 would be 20-year repayment period. And anything over $20,000 would not be eligible for repayment through the district. Now this is going to go into a little bit more detail on each one of the parts of my program. Part one, as I mentioned before, is the solar installation financing portion. Under my plan, single-family homeowners in existing neighborhoods would be eligible to join a newly-created financing district on a voluntary basis during a one-month application period every year. After applications were received, the qualified solar surveyor would assess the applicability of a new photovoltaic system on the home. If the home was found to be eligible, the district would proceed with financing the installation. Now this is, this is what your typical solar installation would look like on your home. You'll see that that's a smart roof system that's actually installed on the roof of this home. In existing homes, you would typically see a solar panel system that would be installed on the home in place of that smart roof system. But you have an AC disconnect, which is normally mounted near the utility meter. You still have your, you have your AC breaker panel, your utility kilowatt hour meter, your solar DC disconnect switch, and your inverter. Part two of the program is the efficiency enhancement financing. While most existing homes would qualify for solar installations based on available roof area and available sunlight criteria, some will not. Galt's existing home inventory includes some homes with roofs that simply cannot support the additional weight of a traditional solar installation. For these homes, Galt should create an additional component as part of its assessment district that finances energy upgrades instead of solar installations. This could provide a way for older, less energy-efficient homes to help offset their carbon footprint by making their homes more energy-efficient. In order to qualify for financing through the district, homeowners must apply for permanent efficiency upgrades to their homes. This is quite important, this, this one little factoid here. All of the legislation that is currently moving through the state capitol will require all energy upgrades to be permanent. So essentially, cities cannot allow homeowners to use this district to purchase refrigerators, washers and dryers, things that could be easily taken from the home if the home ever changed ownership. Permanent should be characterized as upgrades which would not, under normal circumstances, be readily removable. Here's some examples of what would be qualifying upgrades. This is a whole house fan. Many residents are familiar with this. This has been a choice of a lot of thrifty homeowners as a way to decrease their overall energy costs. The way that the whole house fan essentially works is a fan is located centrally in the living areas of the home. Windows are opened up and the fan draws cool air in at night to replace the warm air that is accumulated during the day. High-efficiency energy air conditioners. A lot of our older homes operate at less than the six-seer rating here in the city of Galt. As you can see, the lowest mandate now is 10-seer. If we went up to a 14-seer, you can see it's a 60% energy savings for the homeowner, pretty significant. The next example would be the tankless or energy-efficient storage water heaters. One of the biggest contributors to natural gas waste in a home is through the use of inefficient storage tank water heaters. The way that these tanks operate is you have a tank of water that is essentially heated throughout the day even when it's not being used. There are highly efficient models that still operate under the same principle that would qualify for financing through this district. But there are also the type that you see on the right, which is the tankless water heater that essentially provides hot water on demand and eliminates the need to heat water continuously throughout the day. This is a slide showing the high-efficiency toilets, which would be eligible for financing through this district. You can see the 3.5 gallon per flush is on the left-hand side. That is what is most typical here in the city of Galt. The, the most energy efficient at this time is 1.0 gallon per flush and you can see the significant decrease in the amount of water that is wasted when it's flushed. High-efficiency windows. A lot of the homes here in Galt that were constructed prior to 1970 have single-pane windows and as everyone's aware, windows are one of the leading sources of heat loss in a home during the winter and they're also one of the leading causes of heat entering the home during the summer. And again, this list could essentially be endless because there are a lot of permanent energy upgrades that could be made to your home. Part three would be the mandate for new construction. In addition to a new financing mechanism that would allow current homeowners to finance solar installations and energy enhancements as a way of offsetting our community carbon footprint, the city of Galt should also set a standard for energy efficiency in new residential developments. With an influx of new developments looming over the next 10 years, Galt must take action to reduce their impacts on regional air quality and energy demands by taking steps to offset our footprint. To achieve true carbon reduction, I am proposing that the city of Galt begin to implement a new requirement on residential development that requires at least 20% of all constructed homes in each development to be built in accordance with the SMUDS solar smart home program. SMUDS program is a unique mix of energy upgrades, which are above Title 24 standards, and solar technology. This is an example of a Lennar home that is being built to SMUDS solar smart home characteristics. You can see you have solar cells that are integrated into the roof. You have an additional radiant barrier to reduce cooling costs. You have enhanced insulation. And on the next slide, you'll see exactly how that breaks down. The attic installation, you can see is the same. The radiant barrier would be required on a solar smart home and not on your typical Title 24 home. The wall insulation would be R13 plus one inch of R4.2 foam instead of just R13. There would be a quality installation, low air filtration, windows would be Energy Star rated, the furnace would be rated at .9 instead of .8. The AC seer rating would increase to 14 instead of 13. The ACCA design would be a short-run certification. There would be required duct testing, home energy rating, fluorescent lighting, and once again, you've got the two kilowatt AC solar system. That's the end of the presentation. Wanted to cover a few points in regards to the, the new construction portion. Right now, there is a community energy efficiency block grant that is working its way through, I believe, the Senate, looking for funding. If, if this proposal is funded, communities like Galt that have a program like this already in place would be eligible to qualify for grant money to facilitate these programs and also to offer efficiency incentives to developers that were willing to meet this criteria or increase the criteria. So I'm just presenting this now to get council input. Formal final adopted policy will come back in October. So at this time, I'd like to turn it over to my fellow councilmembers for some input.
Actually, I think it's an excellent idea. I think it's a good concept. I, I believed in it when we, when they first presented it to us. What I like about it, it's a voluntary program. And I think when you look at our utility costs, as they're increasing year after year, and I think Mr. Walters had touched on it, every year, you know, your utilities keep going up and up and up. You know, to buy into this program, especially voluntarily, and it's a 20-year payback basically at most, is, you know, with the rate of increase of inflation, by the time you're five, 10 years into this program, it'll be paying for itself. I for one will definitely be looking to get into this program, given the opportunity. And I think as other people look at it, I think they're going to realize that there's a savings to be made here. Whether you see it immediately, you most certainly, you're going to see it over the years as, as the rates increase. And this, you know, again, it's, you know, your payments will pretty much be that as you would see it in your property taxes, but the benefit is going to be long-term and I'm all for this, so. I'll pass it on to Barbara if she has some comments.
Well, as I was watching, I think it's very interesting, but there's a lot of questions that I had and I'm sure you're going to cover them a little more fully. And the main one is specifically and in details, what part would the city play in it? I saw the word bond up there, which means borrowing money. And I'm thinking of the administration and, and I'm thinking that you're probably going to come back with, you know, more of those specific details. I'd be interested to hear those.
The reason that there's not a really detailed description of the financing program now is there are so many alternatives that could be created based on how the language is drafted at the state level. So until that language is completely set in stone, we won't be able to come forward with a completed financing program. But you're right about the, the bonding issue. What the city would essentially do, we would open up the application period, we would receive those applications, we would take bids on the completion of all of those enhancements, and the cumulative total would essentially tell us how much we would need to bond as a council to be able to implement that phase of the program.
I think there was one part two where you said it was suggested or maybe mandated that you'd have one contractor that would be installing everything.
Well, each different component of the program, so.
Whether it was air conditioning versus, I don't know, water heaters or whatever. Is that something the city can require?
I think it is. I think we could, we could move forward with that as a cost savings measure. I would refer that to the city attorney, but.
Well, that's okay. I think there's going to be a lot of those kinds of questions that we'll need to, to answer, but I certainly have an open mind for it.
Right. Councilmember Claire? Well, I applaud the work you did putting this all together, first off, and the goals you're trying to achieve. Yes, Barbara said, when we get down to the details of it, I think I mentioned at the last meeting, I recently joined SMUDS solar program. If you go out to Wilton, you can see the big solar farm they put out there. And I actually talked briefly with Lois Wright from SMUDS at the air quality meeting last week. And I don't know if you had a chance to chat with her, but I know she's trying to get together with you there, so. So my, first, the voluntary stuff, I have pretty much no problem with anything that's voluntary. The mandatory, you can probably guess my feelings there, so we won't go into a lot of that right now, but I'm probably going to be hesitant for any of the mandatory side. What I'd like to see, the cost of doing a home, I think in the notes you gave us was $5,000 to $7,000. I'd like to see and know what SMUDS next step plans are because when they build a megawatt solar farm and sell us the energy, the odds are their cost per kilowatt's probably going to be significantly lower than each home trying to generate a kilowatt. So I'd like to find out from them what their plans are in the future. I know they're planning to, I think, increase that current two to three times if the, you know, people are willing to buy the power. The powers, I want to say I'm paying an extra $8 a month to buy their solar-generated power versus their normal source. And so I got to believe generating it yourself at home's going to be something more than that.
Well, actually, it would be substantially less than that. I think right now through SMUDS program, you're choosing to purchase clean energy.
Right.
Where with your own solar installation on your home, there could be times where you're generating more electricity than you're using. And at that point, you would essentially be selling your.
Sure.
Energy back into the grid.
But, I don't know if Boyce has stepped out of the room, but if you remember when we looked at putting solar in the market, I forget what he said, it was going to take 14 years to get the return on our investment. So it's going to be important to see those actual numbers. Where would the first 100,000 or million-dollar seed money come from that people would then borrow to do the installations and then pay back?
It'd be through the issuance of bonds.
The city would issue the bonds.
The city would issue the bonds. With the repayment guaranteed through the assessment onto the property tax roll.
Okay. So, all right, no, I'd be anxious to see it. As I said, anything that's on the mandatory side, I already think government mandates too much on people and so I'd probably be hesitant, but if it's voluntary. My, my other concern is that the cost of us overseeing this program is probably going to be difficult to calculate because I assume building and inspection and the fire department, I know the fire department has issues on solar panel installations and power cutoffs and so like to understand all that. But thanks for what you're doing.
Councilmember Roy?
Some questions on the financing, say the $10,000 to $15,000 for 15 years. Why did you limit it to 15 years?
I just, I feel that we don't want to, we don't want the property to encumber the, that overall cost for an extremely long period of time. I'm certainly open to changing that to the 20 years if council thinks that would be more effective.
Well, I, I'm just thinking, let's say you're a senior and you're in a fixed income and you want to join this district. Your goal obviously is to spread this out as far as possible, say 20, 30, 40 years, because the next person that buys that house will then be paying it. So obviously they would want, same as me, I want as long a payout as possible. So obviously, they would want, same as me, I want as long a payout as possible to reduce the cost.
The most important thing to keep in mind, though, is you don't want the financing to exceed the overall life expectancy of the upgrade. So let's say your solar installation is good for 15 to 20 years. You don't want that financing to get all the way out past 20 years, because then essentially the property would be paying for upgrades that were no longer on the home.
But don't solar panels usually last 30 years?
Newer ones do, so.
And then for, say, an older house, if they're upgrading insulation and the windows, that's something that would last for the life of the home.
Life of the home.
Yeah, so.
In regards to the solar installations, I don't know where Darryl saw the $5,000 for the solar installation.
No, it was, I think, categorized as the energy for the full house.
I think most of the solar installations would fall into the $15,000 to $20,000 category. Some of them might fall less than that, depending on how big the home was, but I'm pretty confident that most of them would fall into the $15,000 to $20,000 category. So that would be the 20-year financing.
For some people, really, the financing district is probably the only way they'll ever be able to afford these upgrades. Because if you went out and got a loan, you may get, what, 5%, 10% interest.
Right.
To do this, so it's really not going to happen. So your goal is, let's say you have 100 homeowners that want to do the upgrades, then the city goes out and does the district based on those 100 homeowners after everything's been analyzed.
Right.
And then they sell the bonds.
They sell the bonds.
Inez, what's the bond rate currently right now?
I haven't looked at it for a while. I don't know. I would, just off the top, say probably around 4% right now. I'm not sure. There's a lot of, in just correspondence with the mayor, there's a lot of unknowns at this point, just because the financing mechanism is not in place right now for this type of a program. So that's what the work effort is being presented to the governor right now. So it's a new program, and we're all going to be learning at the same time.
And the bonds, they're sold in what increments now? Is it 10, 20, 30, 40 years, or anything you want?
It's basically, you would structure it to best meet the needs of the city and/or the property owners. You kind of look at the life expectancy. When the city issues bonds, we look at the value at the life expectancy of the improvement. So we want to be sure that the duration of the bond or the term of the bond does not exceed that usefulness. So we would look at that as well. And one of the comments that the mayor mentioned was, we didn't want to exceed over the life expectancy of the improvement, so we would certainly look at that. That would be somewhat difficult to structure a bond issue, though, because if we're looking at someone repaying a bond over five years, and you have others that want to extend it over 20, you're trying to structure a deal that some bonds would become due or mature at a certain time period. It's going to be interesting.
Do you remember the name of the city, Inez, that pushed for Assembly Bill 811, which we had some discussion about? That was supposed to be an assembly bill that cleared the way for this type of a program to be implemented. But essentially, I think the biggest hurdle with that assembly bill was the fact that it required bonds to be sold on each property that wanted to participate. I can't remember the name of the city. Palm Desert.
Palm Desert was the one that actually made the change in legislation, but it used the 1911 Act as opposed to what we use, is the 1913 Act, and it basically puts the light, the bond, on its specific units instead of as entire district. So that's why, at least who I've been in discussion with, basically do not believe that that source will be used.
Can people in the back here? Yes? Okay.
I have to ask this question. What would happen if the property went into default, like some of the things that's going on now? Who would be responsible for it?
Actually, we have this discussion as well. This was brought up when we watched this presentation from the representative of the city of Berkeley. And essentially, the city would be placed at the front of the collection window if the home ever went into foreclosure. So essentially, we could foreclose upon the home to collect our money before the mortgage holder could foreclose on the home to collect their money. And you can correct me if I'm wrong, Inez, but that's the way.
It's the same process that we use for our current districts. Basically, what council sees every year is any property that is delinquent on their assessment, which is this would be an assessment CFD. If they are delinquent, then basically we have authority to initiate foreclosure proceedings immediately, rather than go through like the property tax delinquency, which is a five-year period. And I think even with the amount of delinquencies currently in place, they're looking at legislation to increase that from five years, reducing it down to a three-year time period. So basically, we have the same foreclosure process on collection of delinquencies.
Would it be similar to the district that we just talked about that was delinquent?
1999, that's one. It would be the similar process.
It would be that same process.
Correct.
Kurt, what's the average life expectancy of a home? 100 years?
Come on, Kurt.
Come on, you're the planning guy.
That's planning, that's not building.
Your expert opinion.
My expert opinion. There's houses in town that are over 100 years old.
Dirty house, yeah.
It depends on, you know, owner maintenance.
Builder.
The builder. I think that plays a big part of it. I don't know. I don't know.
I'm sure Mike Edwards loves this idea, because he's always supportive of mandatory things like this, so I appreciate his support. I think this is a great idea. I think this puts Galt on the forefront of doing something to address our oil-based economy, which is really a disaster both for this country and the world. We need to move away from oil, especially foreign oil, and this is the start of the process. So I'm looking forward to this moving through the next level. And I appreciate Andrew doing all this hard work to bring this forward.
Just wanted to explain why this is so important to get this program implemented and in place before funding begins to trickle down for the Energy Conservation Block Grant. Monies from this block grant will be extremely competitive. If the city of Galt implements a program like this, it will put us at the forefront of getting some of that grant money. And in order to make this program work here in the city of Galt without depending upon the general fund to cover administrative costs and incentives to developers to participate, it's important that we get some of that grant money. So I'm hoping that we can move this through in the next couple of months, clear any obstacles that may come up with council members' questions, just get everything completely out on the table and work through everything, so we can move forward with this program before any funding trickles down from that block grant. Appreciate council for letting me present this. And once again, I just want to let the council know that I'd be happy to entertain any comments or questions after the meeting, through meetings with me individually, or through email correspondence, so that I can bring back a formal draft copy at the first meeting in October. So. Our next item is under Communications, and that is the Wastewater Treatment Plant Upgrade Oversight Committee Charter Amendment Request. Just to provide a little more background information, I'd like to turn it over to our Public Works Director, Greg Holliday.
Good evening. In March 2007, the council established the Wastewater Treatment Plant Upgrade Oversight Committee and approved the committee charter. The committee would consist of five members, each council member having his own appointee. The general role of the committee was advisory, and the council retained all fiscal and project decisions, approvals, and direction to city staff. As part of the program, you approved a charter that says the mission is to ensure the upgrade of the city of Galt's wastewater treatment plant meets the requirements of the state of California and is completed in the best interest of the citizens of Galt at the highest level of efficiency and least possible cost. You then went on to define the role of the committee and what they're responsible for. In attending the meetings, there's been a number of things that have been outside of this scope that the committee has discussed, and staff has gone along with most of the requests. But as we get further and further away from the basic charter, which was the upgrade of the water treatment plants, my comfort level has waned a little bit relative to what they're getting involved with, particularly relative to giving them proprietary information in advance of council. Most recently, the committee has asked that they be involved in the completion of the rate study and the water implementation plan. That is clearly, in my opinion, outside of the scope of the charter, and so I suggested that they bring that back to council and see if council wanted to broaden their scope. And that's why it's before you tonight.
Ryan, do we have any comments by council?
So I'd like to hear, actually, from the committee. If there's members here first, I'd like to understand, get a little bit more understanding what it is they want to do, perhaps, and before we make that decision. But I'd be interested with hearing what they have to say before I make any statements.
Turner, Rick, would you guys like to talk?
Rick Walters, I'm on the committee. I wasn't prepared to talk about this, but there has been discussion about expenditures, which I read my speech earlier. And when Mr. Holliday at one point says that he wanted to combine the rates, Fund 07 and Fund 15, I was completely adamant against that. I didn't think it was necessary. But to go into there, I started looking and researching, and I found out the expenditures that I reported to you earlier tonight. It's the same thing as a detective. When he's going out and searching for information, he doesn't stop at the border. He goes beyond the border to find out what's going on. And basically, that's really what we're asking for. We're asking for permission to go beyond the scope in a responsible manner.
Just in regards to the rate study, or?
Well, the rate study, I'm not really privy to. I mean, I'm not really concerned too much about that. I think there was other members that were concerned about the rate study. And it's, and to me, it makes a little bit of sense for us to be involved in that, to find out what the city is up to and how we as citizens look at what they're trying to accomplish. Now, one of the things was winner averaging. I don't know if you know what winner averaging is, but it means nothing to the citizens. That means it's going to cost the citizens more money. So we don't want to winner average, and I wouldn't have found that out if we hadn't talked about these things that are beyond the scope. So these are the little things that really come out when you really press the issues or you really start looking for things beyond the scope of our committee. And that's what I'm trying to say. It leads you beyond the scope sometimes. And to be told to stop, and they're not going to answer our questions, I had to leave one of the meetings one time, because I just felt that it was necessary for me to leave and go outside and blow off some steam, which I did. So, but it's important. You're dealing with people's lives and some of these studies and everything, and we're a sitting committee already. We're already there. We know what's going on. It didn't take us five years, like they suggested earlier, to get on board with this thing. We were on board day one, so.
Did you take a vote as a group to expand?
I had left that meeting that night, but I think they took, it was a 4-0 vote to go beyond the scope.
Now, Rick, you can kind of understand staff's perspective. Greg is there basically to facilitate the discussion in regards to the sewer upgrade. And if he were to allow you guys to get into the discussions of other things as a formal committee, he would be violating what council directed him to do. So I don't want this to become a personal issue with Greg. I think he's just following the direction that he's been given by the council. Now, I support letting you guys look at the rate study, because I think that certainly falls into your scope of work. If it wasn't clearly defined when we created the committee, I'm okay with making that change now. In regards to the water meter implementation program, I just, I have a hard time drawing a correlation between the wastewater upgrade and the water meter installations.
Did you, by the way, did you get our vote for the solar farm for the upgrade?
Five to zero, right?
It was a 5-0 vote that we wanted, because of the additional costs that were going to be coming down the road for the power generation. And you know you can also use solar for the lift stations. I don't know if you're aware of that, but you can use solar for lift stations also, which will save the taxpayers a lot of bucks, so if you get this thing done. But it's nothing personal against Greg, but I was told that's not going to happen on this upgrade. So, but that's outside the scope also, but we discussed that, too. But I kept pushing for that, because it's best for the citizens to have this solar farm out there on our plant, on our plant area.
Where on the plant area?
Wherever we can put it.
Are we talking about solar power for our sewer plant?
The committee and one of the early meetings brought up the desire to investigate solar, and it is not within the scope of the current upgrade. We are making provisions where appropriate to allow for future expansion. Currently, there's no room for solar. There's no budget for solar, there's really no discussion for solar at this point in time. And my suggestion was, in order to keep track, on track with the upgrade by the required implementation date of 2010, that we not get bogged down with solar. I think solar is a good idea, and it has certainly a lot of merit, but not in regards to current upgrade. We haven't taken any studies to figure out where it would go, but we are making, you know, whatever minor concessions we can relative to additional duct works or points of connection that would allow a future connection to a solar plant.
Basically, because we're in a very tight time schedule, and if we do anything to delay that, we may have problems with the water quality board.
Issues with schedule, also with the funding. We were talking, a great deal of discussion has been about the cost. Whether it was, it's 50, or now it's down to $25 a month, that'll be the current rate. That would go sky high if we wouldn't try to provide a solar upgrade at this point in time.
Well, we've been asking, I think, the way I understand it is, we've been asking for all the support to be infiltrated into the upgrade, so it's there, not necessarily, you know, like the piping and whatever electricity components need to be incorporated into the design, not necessarily piped in, but into the design to start with. That would help quite a bit, so that down the road, you could take and quickly go into the solar generation. Do you understand what I'm saying?
I do. We've had a conversation before, Rick, about the El Dorado Irrigation District's new facility out on Latrobe Road. They spent, I believe, $2 million to put in a new solar array. They got $1 million worth of grant funding from PG&E to put it in. And their utility bill to operate out at the water treatment facility, which is where the solar panels are installed, went from $80,000 a month to $18,000, which is the cost to be on PG&E's grid. That's all they're being charged, is $18, so.
And we're on charge, I mean, we're on the road to having maybe $300,000 or $400,000 a year energy for that wastewater upgrade, so we need to do something. And that's, this is what happens when you start talking about things that are not really in a very narrow, defined way. You have discussions, like I'm sure staff has discussions also, we did the same thing. So that's how you find things out, and that's what leads you to these kind of decisions that you kind of make.
So would you be comfortable if council moved forward with just allowing you to look at the rate study and not the water meter installation?
Well, I don't know how you can just look at the rate study and not the water meter implementation. I don't think that we would go, I can only speak for myself. I'm not planning to go too far with that. My main thing is the cost for the people of Galt, about their bills keep going up every year. That's my main feature and the upgrade, and the cost of the upgrade and how they're going to do it, so.
Are there any other questions for?
Thank you.
Mr. Walters, before he steps down?
I would like to make a couple of clarifications. One.
Sure. Why don't you walk up on Mr. Holliday's?
One, I have never not answered any questions of the committee. I have continued to answer the questions, but I've suggested that they bring this back to the council as we're getting further and further away from the established charter. We did talk about combining the 7th Fund and the 15th Fund. That's because part of the $25 a month is going to pay for increased maintenance. We have already completed some of the improvements out there as part of the upgrade. We are now incurring those increased maintenance costs. Whereas we go forward, yes, at some point in time, we're going to have to take some of those 15 Fund monies and use that for regular operations and maintenance. We're incurring those costs right now. Winner averaging is going to save the people of Galt money. This is people, right now, their sewer bill is based upon their water bills. So in the summer months, when they have high landscaping irrigation costs, even though the water bill's sky high, the sewer bill goes up when no more water's going down the sewer. This is a fairer, more equitable way to restrict the maximum sewer bill to meet the highest water bill in the winter. So, they're not being charged based upon water that's being put on the grass and not going down their sewer.
Mr. Slaughterback?
John Slaughterback, 11th City Call. I was the one, one of the ones that was in favor of this. I voted for it. And when I got home, I got to thinking about it that I would like to see some of these other committee members involved. And I wanted to see some of them come in here and participate too. There's two of the committee members that very seldom show up at the meetings. And I don't see how, I was the only one to attend the interviews of the engineering firms. And I don't see how that they can just come to a meeting once in a while and know that much about what's going on. I wanted to see them, one of them, come here and present something to you, to show that they were interested. They can't do it part-time, coming to council, I mean, coming to these meetings and say that it's, then they'll prove something. And they wouldn't have been there part of the time to be approving it. So, I have a problem with that. But I'm for this, and I was that night. I just like more participation and not just voting for something when they come once in a while.
Who's not attending regularly? Maybe we should look at a replacement.
Well, we got two people. I don't know what the problem is. We got, I think his name's Mark, and then also the other council member used to be Rick Stansel, yeah. But they don't show up that, you know, that much. And I don't see how you can make a good judgment call when you're not involved that much. Tom does show up all the time. But I was the only one at these meetings for engineering firms. So, and they voted on it like they passed everything. And I don't see how you can pass everything without being more involved in it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure.
Tom Baldwin, 11th City Call. I just, for clarification, they don't, the wastewater treatment committee, oversight committee is not going to be involved in any of this. Is that correct?
Involved.
The rate study?
Well, at this time, they're not.
Unless it's changed.
Unless council decides tonight to change that.
Then why did Mr. Slaughterback get involved?
With?
With the interviews and the selection process of the rate study and talk to the consultants? Why was he even doing that? If I could.
Sure.
The rate study in part includes the upgrade rate. It does not include all of the components of the rate. There's stormwater rate. There is a water meter implementation portion of the rate. And the water meter implementation plan, those are all portions of it. We did involve the committee early on in the selection of the rate consultant. The panel that Mr. Slaughterback sat on was the proposals for the tertiary UV disinfection upgrade that we just awarded that contract for. That's directly related to the upgrade of the plant. So, we are involving the committee when it has to do with the upgrade. You're talking strictly about the water meter implementation plan and issues such as low-flow toilets, toilet retrofit programs, other types of things. I think we're getting outside of the scope of the authority. Again, my concern had to do with giving this group information in advance of the rest of the citizens and the council, having this information be copied verbatim, paragraph by paragraph, onto the blogs for people to read. That was outside of the scope of the authority. Because I really was not authorized to release that to them, issues there relative to the report of waste discharge or other issues like that. And so, that's why I expressed a concern to the chairman and why he brought it here tonight. But there is a reason for having this committee. We are including them in things that we believe are related to the actual upgrade itself. Well, it seems like they should be included in this rate study if they're concerned about what we're going to be paying in rates and for the upgrade and everything. I mean, it's just part of the process. Why couldn't they be involved in it? Is it, there a law against what they're doing? Or why can't they get involved in something like this? Because they're the ones that are supposed to be checking for us, the public, to make sure that money isn't being spent, you know, without being looked at. And this here is just a reflection of any oversight committee for anything, whether it's police department, high school, or anything. It's just, it's a reflection on all the oversight committees. So, this is a major decision that you're going to have to make because it's going to reflect on all oversight committees, whether the public's going to be trustful or, it's a perception of the public right now, how you make this decision. And I'm just, I'm just thinking a rate study is part of their job, I think.
Well, just to clarify, we haven't told them that they can't look at this. This is more a formality now to decide whether or not to.
Well, I thought he just did. I got this off, you know, when I brought it up. It says here, in order for the council to be able to make a decision and add this to the charter, this item would have to be agendized with appropriate public review and requirements. So, I mean, the public's going to have to get involved in this. It's getting closer and closer. So, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just saying your evaluation of this decision is going to be looked at, not only for the wastewater, but other oversight committees. That's all.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Baldwin.
Any other comments by council?
Well, I wanted to touch on my original concerns of forming the committee and to use the recommendations we heard from Mr. Walters earlier that there are agendas to just grow government. And this is a typical example of how government just keeps growing. A committee is created, and then pretty soon it's expanded. And then the committee has a subcommittee. And all you have to do is look at the state of California for a prime example of it. And there are five people elected by all of the citizens of this city to be the oversight committee for everything. Rates, you name it, we're those five people. And they and every other person in the public can comment on what they think should occur on anything that comes before this organization, on rates or anything else. And I would encourage them to keep doing it. The two gentlemen who spoke are two of the most involved people in our community. And I applaud them for that. And I think Mr. Baldwin is right in there. But to keep expanding committees and committees' areas of responsibility, and then staff having to support the work they're doing when our staff is stretched trying to support the work we're asking them to do, I again take Mr. Walters' caution. Stay away from things that just perpetuate themselves and cause growth. So, I will not support the motion tonight to further expand the responsibility because I promise you, they'll be back or someone in their place and ask for even more things to be involved in. And they can already be involved in every aspect of this as a member of the public.
Councilmember Boyd, any comments?
There's nothing wrong with the committee members wanting to be more involved. That's a good thing. That's what we want from the public. We want them to be more involved. So, it's not a negative, it's a positive. So, I appreciate their concern for the city. So, Darrell and I are kind of total opposites on this. But I think they should be able to review the rate study. I think it will make a better product for the city.
Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, before you entertain a motion, a point of clarification. My understanding is this committee was formed by way of resolution and that the resolution establishes the full scope of the committee. And in order to ensure that there is a clear record going forward as to their scope, my recommendation would be that the council provide direction to staff and bring back an amended resolution at your next meeting for you to entertain as opposed to essentially amending a resolution by verbal motion. The cleaner method typically to amend a resolution is by a follow-up resolution. So, that would be my recommendation.
Thank you, Steve. Do we have a motion?
What motion are we looking for at this point? I thought we were saying we're going to bring it back, or that was the suggestion of the city attorney.
We'd make a motion to direct staff to bring forward an amended resolution at a future meeting.
Okay. I'm fine with that. Is that, is that your motion, Dawn?
Yeah, I'll make a motion. I just wanted to see if you had any comments regarding it first, before we move forward.
Well, not too much that has already been said, other than we formed an oversight committee. And I think to restrict them does not build credibility and the kind of transparency that we want with the public. I would just say that I am supportive of the oversight committee that has been created to be a true oversight committee, especially when it comes to rates. Because that is what people really are interested in and really expect from the committee, is to feel that they have someone else looking at those rates, even though we do have public hearing. So, I'm in favor of being as transparent as we can. And as a committee, you do get access to more material and have more time to study it than the average citizen has. So, I feel we have this committee, and I'd be supportive of it.
Okay. All right. Before I make that motion, I do want to make a comment myself. Is, you know, I think it was important, the reason I asked why, what the vote was, I want to see what kind of support they had from the group. And they've really put a lot of time and effort into this wastewater treatment plant issue. And they really got in deep, and they've really worked hard to get on board with this as quick as they can. And it's important, if they want to expand out, and in this issue, I can be supportive in this. But I would be a little concerned as to how far you allow yourself to get to expand it out and how much you want to get involved. Because I have to agree with Councilman Claire. At some point in time, it can be, it could almost get to a point of being burdensome on staff and on yourselves as well. But in this situation, I would be okay with it. I would support it. And I'll make a motion that we accept and move forward as recommended by our attorney to bring back in the next meeting.
And as a point of clarification, if I'm the staff that's being directed, I'm clear as to the breadth of scope that the council is wishing that the committee do take. And I'm fine with whatever council decides.
Right.
My concern was not the scope, it was just the authorization for the scope.
Sure. To the extent of the rate study.
Just the rate study and anything that encompasses any of the rates included in the rate study. So, that would include the full water meter implementation plan, a toilet retrofit plan, anything that would affect the water, sewer, storm drainage rates. Is that what council is directing?
Yes. Is that correct? Well, you just expanded it now to everything. Well, are you talking about?
See, it came true. I tell you.
See, Darrell's already on top of that. All right. So, I'm sorry. So, we're talking about the rate study in itself, and you're saying the rate study itself will expand out to all those issues.
That's correct.
Well, do we want to put a limitation on it? Wouldn't be the question. But I don't see why we would want to. If it's, if, I don't know that they're going to want to look at every part of the rate study. Do you feel that they're going to?
Mr. Holliday, the committee. I don't tell the committee what they should.
I'm going to.
Is responsible for keeping the committee on. Give them reminders from time to time. I let them know where I can. I don't tell them what they can't do. That's not the way this committee is structured.
Right.
If I can make a point of clarification, aside from the fact that I totally disagree with where you're now headed.
Yes.
The five of us operate under a rule that I cannot call Mr. Holliday and ask him to assist me on anything, anything at all that takes more than two hours without all of you voting on it. We are about to give authority to five unelected people that I don't have. They are going to be able to use way more than two hours of staff time without any of our monitoring the use. I mean, if we're going to do that, I would like also an amendment that I have the same access we're about to give these people.
We can't give you that access.
Yeah, I know. This is.
That's too dangerous.
This is crazy. Because as well-intended as what they want to do, I understand. But the reason we limit ourselves the way we do is that if all five of us call Greg and just give him two hours activity a week, he'll never get anything done. So, if we're going to have a resolution as broad as you're about to propose, I'd like some idea of what limit of our staff's time will be put on it. Because, or else I want at least that access. I've lived with the rule because I understand the need for it.
Greg, do you agree with Darrell in what he's saying?
You don't have to answer that, Greg.
Some of it, not all of it.
Well, what would you recommend, Greg?
It's really not for me to say. I think the citizen committee has the best interest of the community at heart. I don't personally think there is a need for this committee. I've never been in favor of it. But it's the council's job to do Ted what to do, and I do my best ability to do that. The council may want to consider what recommendations in the time since we formed this committee, since March 2007, and what has actually come from this committee. They've had several internal topics. They've had votes. But I don't recall a single recommendation coming forward from this committee to the council through this committee. There's been one that's been brought through staff, and it was the selection of option A versus option B. There's been lots of other votes they've taken. But the way it's supposed to work is their chairman's supposed to bring this to the committee. So, there's lots that they're doing themselves, but they've not, in my opinion, fulfilled their obligations under the charter, one of which was to do an annual report. They've been involved for more than a year now, year and a half, and there's been no annual report back to the council. If we're going to move forward, I think that we probably ought to use the committee for the way it's supposed to be, and we follow rules and they follow the rules. Again, I have no problem giving this committee whatever the council seems fit. I think there's a lot of benefit in using them to liaison with the community, which is one of the charters. My concern is that I was going out on a limb and giving them information that they did not have a right to because it was not part of their charter. There will be an impact of staff. I think previously we estimated up to a quarter full-time employee. The more we get involved, the more there is in preparing the packets, doing the copying, the printing costs. So, that's going to grow. I don't have any estimates as to what that's going to be because I don't know what the breadth is that's being considered. But it's going to take a little bit more and more and more. The meetings will get a little bit longer, meeting once a month. So, there will be an impact in staff. It's impossible to estimate what that's going to be at this point in time.
And I'd also like to recommend that maybe we impose some sort of attendance requirement and how long terms of the current appointed people will last. Because I think the other point that was made was good. If you're going to put the kind of weight in this committee, the people should be attending to get all the information who are voting on it.
Doesn't that charter, does the charter not already have something to that effect in place?
Well, in regards to the length of service on the committee, we covered that when we created it. We essentially said that we wanted the group to stay as a whole, regardless of council members changing position that made, changing positions that made those appointments. Because the group would begin with a base of knowledge and continue to expand that throughout the upgrade process.
But we've heard from the committee, some of those have not maintained that base of knowledge.
Right. Now, that gets to the second portion of what you're said, which is the attendance requirement. And I'm perfectly comfortable with, if we don't have a positive attendance record by members of this group, then we'll look at replacing them and soliciting applications again from the public. I mean, the intent was to make selections to this committee of individuals that were in it for the long haul. But apparently, we have a couple of members that might not have the time to put aside that they thought that they were going to have, so. Well, I don't quite support what Dawn is suggesting. I would rather just increase their scope to look at the rate study individually. I really, like I said before, I don't see the need to look at the water meter implementation program and other aspects like that. But I do feel that there is something positive that can be gained by this committee looking at the rate study, especially in regards to the wastewater rates. So, that's what I would be comfortable with moving forward as a motion right now.
Are they going to be able to do the rate study on an individual basis without needing to look at other areas, Greg?
Entirely no. The water rates will include issues that are being discussed, determined as opposed, as it relates to the water meter implementation plan.
Because it seems to me that at some point in time, as they're looking at this, they're going to have questions about some of the other areas. It's going to expand out.
That's probably likely. And if we're talking about winter averaging and tying water rates, water usage to sewer rates, then those are tied together. So, this is somewhat difficult to separate those out. You could look at the rate study only for the wastewater portion of it, but even taking the rest at face value.
What would you think would be a reasonable compromise?
Well, let me, let me make a suggestion. I tried to convey this to the chairperson via email. I really feel it's important for him to be here and explain to us exactly what the group wants to accomplish. We've heard from two members that are basically speaking for themselves. But we need to hear from the chairperson to know exactly what this group approved and exactly what they're recommending us to adopt here in front of the city council. So, I'd like to just leave it at that for now. We'll invite the chairperson to come back before the city council, present a formal request, and answer some of these questions that just can't. request and answer some of these questions that just cannot be answered right now.
Should we also, in addition to that, when he comes back, request an annual report so that we know that they're meeting their expectations?
Sure.
Because we haven't gotten the annual report, and Greg's been pretty clear about that, that we should have received one. So they should be able to provide it, if he's going to come forward, and provide the annual report. In addition to it, he can make his request.
And Greg, have you been keeping attendance records?
Yes, we keep attendance records and action minutes of all, and as well as tapes of all meetings.
Okay. I think it'd be important for council to get a report on, on the attendance since this committee was created. So if we need to replace some of the members, we would do it at this time before waiting until we get even deeper into the process.
Mayor, can I ask a question?
Sure.
I was thinking, one of the issues in this was that they felt the committee, or at least part of the committee, felt that they should have an opportunity to review the rate study before it goes to public hearing. And I, when is that coming up? I'm wondering if that's something that should be taken into consideration or not. Do we need to, you know, move quickly before the public hearing? When is that scheduled for, Greg?
We haven't scheduled, we had some delays with the final report, and so it's been pushed back probably sometime in late September, perhaps early October. So I would not suggest we put it off too long, but we can certainly bring it back at the next council meeting.
So would we have time to review what this Oversight Committee is going to do? Give them time to review everything before the public hearing?
I believe we can certainly attempt to schedule, the committee right now meets once a month. Meeting if necessary, but we will attempt to work around everybody's schedule.
Okay. Am I right that was one of your goals, or at least some of your committee members' goals, was to have your input before it goes to public hearing?
I'm assuming it was just to look at, see what's going to happen.
Okay.
You know, if there's some questions asked, but just to reserve.
Okay. So it sounds like we have time with a little adjustment.
All right. Takes us under the regular calendar to item one, which is under the city manager's office, and that is the Sacramento Public Library operational changes. At this time, I'll turn it over to our city manager, Ted Anderson.
And I'd like to introduce in the, in the audience, if he didn't go home, I don't seem.
Nope, he's there.
Rick Tigard. Rick is the Deputy Director of Administrative Services with the Sacramento County Library System. I'm going to have him say a few words and then explain what they've done, and then I'll tell you what your options are.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Meredith, members of the council. It's a pleasure for me to be here tonight. Again, my name is Rick Tigard. I'm the Deputy Director of Administration for the Sacramento Public Library Authority. It's not every night I get to come and talk to a council where we're actually bringing you some money, so this is a great topic to talk to you about. I was to your council meeting a little more than a year ago and talked about the changes to the new joint powers authority agreement that we were asking you to, to approve and be a party to. Subsequent to your approval, that agreement went into effect July 1st of 2007. This is the first budget year that we're implementing the actions required of the new joint powers structure within that new agreement. A group of parties to the agreement talked about all of the financial aspects of it, and two issues came forward from that group's discussion that were approved by our Board of Directors. One was the issue of funding capital maintenance for cities that own libraries and for the county that provides many of the systems libraries. The structure we ended up on was to provide $7 per square foot from the property tax money that funds the library system back to the member agency providing the library so that there is a funding mechanism to help pay for the capital maintenance, the air conditioning units that need to eventually be replaced, some of the costs of operating the library that the library owner bears, like the cost of insurance and things of that nature. So for the city of Galt this year, that brings back $29,575 back to the city to help pay some of those costs of providing the library to the library authority. The second component involves looking at what the base costs of running the library system are compared to the property tax revenues generated, and if there's any supplemental amounts over and above available, bringing that back to the jurisdictions as well, according to a formula that was developed. And then talking with each member agency about that, that funding and how they would like that to be used for supplemental library service or to be set aside for future library programs or future library construction or improvements. The amount available this year, again, coming back to the city of Galt, is $15,207. And because that's not a large sum at this point, most of the member agencies are recommending to just reserve that at the library for future use. That money will be earmarked for Galt within our county cities library fund and will grow based on our pooled rate of return, which right now is just over, I believe, about three and a half percent invested through the city of Sacramento. So that's the two components brought to you this evening. I believe there is an appropriation of some of the capital maintenance money that you're recommending to the council tonight. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those at this time.
Great. Now, let me tell the council how it affects the budget. And what's interesting is, in the past, I think one of the reasons that we didn't get any money is because we owned our own library and they provided the services. So I think that the new program actually is very beneficial to us. In the budget for this year, we had to put approximately $18,000 from Fund Six to fund that in the library, and that money was basically borrowed from the general fund. So what we intend to do is to take the $29,000, put that in the line item for the library, take the money that we borrowed from the general fund and put it back in, so that there's actually be a savings to the, a reduction in the amount of money that we borrowed to fund the library system. As far as the capital items, I would see, there's two programs you can do. You can put it aside for capital needs or you can have increased services. This money stays with the library system until you make application to decide what to do with it. I'm recommending that the council put it in the capital fund for any possible future expansion or to meet any grant where you may expand the library. But if the money builds up over time, if you wish to change it at any time during the budget process back to increased services, you could do so. So you're not stuck with the capital programming forever, so you can have that changed. But I would recommend that you put it in the capital fund. They will hold that. If they have the money next year, they'll put more money in it and let it build up so that you have a little fund there for matching possibilities in the future.
Councilman McClure? I wanted to ask Ted or Boyce, are there other maintenance things that need to be done that we had put in the immediate budget because we didn't see the funding roof repair that?
Correct. If you recall, during the budget process for M&amp;O, we budgeted approximately $13,000, and then for capital, we set aside $5,000 specifically for roof repair. But with this additional money, we'll be able to, I think, do a much better job on that.
Okay. Because I would like to see us take care of any immediate maintenance needs that may have not been originally funded because we just didn't think we could do it. Then, I don't know if we've had a chance, but to get input from the folks working at the library as well as the local friends of the library, if they have items that need to be addressed. But I have no problem with the general philosophy that's been presented.
But if this is one-time fund, why would we want to put it back in the general fund? Why don't we talk to the library, see if there's things that they've wanted for a long time and possibly use the money for that?
Are you, are you making reference to the $15,000?
No, I'm referencing the entire amount because I thought Ted said he wanted to pay back the general fund.
Correct. The $18,000, I believe, approximately $18,000, and then the $29,000 to put that into the M&amp;O for the library for this current fiscal year.
But instead of paying back the general fund, since it's already been budgeted?
Well, the money came from reserves. They're providing us with more than the capital needs that we budgeted. There's, there's another $11,000. Doesn't make sense for me to continue to use reserves when they provided you with extra money now for those types of things.
We just thought staff should, you know, since it came from the general fund reserve, is reimburse the general fund reserve.
I agree, but how, how are we doing for planning for the future library, for funding to build that?
We haven't, and that's where the other money comes in.
$15,000.
I know, but what about just taking the whole thing and putting that in?
Because you're using reserve, that reserve wasn't intended for that.
I know, but it's already been budgeted.
If you read the report, though, the other issue is, is that in the general plan process, there's some direction in the future to put some type of levy on for new homes for the library. That's where you're going to get your additional money, because the city's never set money aside to replace anything, I mean, to build or to replace in the, in the thing.
But if that's true, what's the plan on that? Because we can talk about it forever, but we need to start the process if we're really going to do that.
That's what I'm telling you, is to take that money that they have and allocate it for a capital reserve for the future to start your, start your money.
No, you just talked about the possible levy on new homes. What have we done to prepare for that?
It will be a part of the general plan process.
Kurt? You bring up a good point about the two components of funding. The $29,575 will be a recurring amount coming back to the city every year. The $15,000 supplemental is a one-time this year. If property taxes continue to reduce, that money may not be recurring next year. When the market changes, that amount could grow in future years and become more significant.
Kurt? Funding new libraries from a?
There are policies related to public, funding of public facilities in the updated general plan. That will be one of many items to be implemented with the new general plan.
So we're not talking about then future growth in the city limits? You're talking about future growth in our general plan?
Well, that includes the existing city as well. I mean, that, that's purely a policy matter for the council, but whether it's outside existing boundaries or inside existing boundaries.
I think, I think the discussion that Ted was talking about is future impact fee. A public facility impact fee specifically dedicated for libraries. We have one for City Hall, we have one for other facilities, we've never had one for the library. So when we do the public facilities fee update, after the general plan is adopted, then we would incorporate a library impact fee into that new study.
So that's planned to be done within the next year, then?
Yes. It's budgeted in the current fiscal year. So probably sometime around the first of the year, adoption in the spring.
Okay. That's what I was asking for. Thanks.
Any other comments by council or questions?
I have none.
Barbara?
I have no additional questions.
Daryl, any further questions? And Tim, you've got everything covered.
Yeah.
Do we have any motions pertaining to staff's recommendation?
I move that we do staff's recommendation. Repaying the general fund reserves with part of the money, I think, Ted, do you want to repeat what, briefly what you had, had recommended?
When, when we had to balance the O6 fund.
Yeah, I understand that.
We had to use general fund money. I'm suggesting that we take the maintenance money, remove the line item that we funded for maintenance operation, the library that came from the reserve, and replace that back to the reserve. Allow the $29,000 to be the maintenance and operation line item for the library.
That's what I move. Thank you.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Call for the vote?
Aye.
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 No.
Aye. Pro four to one.
Thank you for being here tonight.
Takes us to item two under the regular calendar, that is the mobile home rent control ordinance. Just going to turn it over to the vice mayor to provide just brief amount of direction right now for the public, just to give them an update of what's taking place with the rent control ordinance.
Well, we're currently looking at alternative options as well as with the rent control itself. We've had some issues brought to our attention by the city attorney, which we've discussed. We're going to be still, we're going to be reviewing our options and bring this back at a later date perhaps, after we've had a chance to review either a rent control or an alternative to, to the issue.
Just to clarify, too, the vice mayor and myself will be meeting with representatives of the park owners association and representatives of the residents of the parks that would be affected by this ordinance to see if we can come to some type of a compromise that would prevent the city from having to totally get into a, a ordinance situation. So that will be the next step in the process. Item three under the regular calendar is under the police department, and that is the 800 megahertz radio upgrade project. And at this time, I'll turn it over to our chief of police, Lauren Catalico.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. This is probably one of the better news items, I hope. We have people trying to give us some grant money on a project that we really need to be involved in.
Yes.
The recommendation is to approve the funding, that the council approved the funding appropriation and grant revenue source for the 800 megahertz radio project as outlined below. That amount is $268,000. Approve findings and approve designation of Motorola as a sole source provider and authorize the city manager to negotiate and execute an agreement with Motorola for provision of equipment and installation in the amount not to exceed the grant funding of $268,000. I'm sure most of you have heard before, so I'll summarize the reason why Galt, the city of Galt wants, the police department wants to be on the 800 megahertz radio system. Other than Iltin, every other municipal police and fire agency in this county is on 800. They all talk to one another, they all have interoperability, the fire department can talk to the police department, and of course, Galt isn't there. Now, for a long time, there was a good reason why we weren't there, because that 800 service in the southern part of this county was not very good. In fact, our in-house 450 megahertz system was good enough to, was better than the 800 system. But one of the things that we were able to do, something that Galt has that was helpful in this is land. They needed a place to put the tower, and we had a place for them to put it. So we were able to negotiate a $200,000 buyout where we didn't have to pay into the system in exchange for letting them put the tower up at the back of Station 46. The only thing holding us back after that was we don't have the equipment to console retrofit for the police dispatch center to change over to the 800 system. The rest of the, of the police departments and the fire departments and the other people on the OES grant, the Office of Emergency Services, of the 400 different, I'm sorry, the 40 different applications for grant money this year, Galt's need was put number one. So everyone wants to see us be part of this system because if we have the next flood, the next earthquake, the next railroad disaster, we are going to need to be able to talk to all these people, line to line, on the same radios, without having to phone them up on the cell phone like we're currently doing when we need them. So it's, it's a pretty exciting project. We've got about a half a million of costs deferred so far by getting this grant, so I think we're doing pretty well. There is about an $18,000 a year residual fee. I want to make sure the council knows that once you're on the system, that's about what it costs to stay on the system. And we would have to budget forward for that and starting from the next fiscal year. They charge you per radio, whether it's mobiles in the cars or portables on the officer's hip. It's about $250 per radio. And what we need right now, we're figuring somewhere between around $18,000. Again, it's an exciting project. I didn't think we'd get this far with as many needs as we had, but we've, the stars lined up for us pretty well, and we certainly, I think, need it. I think it could help us extremely, be extremely efficient for us in a, in a disaster. And, you know, it moves Galt Police Department into place to participate with the other police agencies and the fire agencies in the county. That's the staff report. Be glad to answer any questions.
We got this, did Congressman Lundgren, we got this through his assistance?
No.
No? Okay. I was curious, because I know at one time we were talking to the staff and that.
And we've, we've asked just about everybody for help.
Yeah, we have. I wasn't sure if he had anything to do with it or not, so I thought I'd ask.
I, I think we added support, but he wasn't able to get any funding for it. This came from the, the Weapons of Mass Destruction Homeland Security Grant from the Office of Emergency Service. Like I said, it was, we're competing with everybody in the county for a very limited amount of funds, and we were pretty fortunate to get this. The need, I think, is pretty well stated.
Okay. And, and again, thank you to the other agencies who said that this was a priority within the county. I think that definitely helped.
Very good.
Yeah, particularly the sheriff's office, who had several other things that they allowed to take a second seat to this being, you, you, to get these things passed, the other agencies have to go to bat for us, and they did.
That's good. I think it's long overdue.
Any other comments by council, or do we have a motion? I'll move.
I'll second.
Call for the vote?
Aye.
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 Aye. Pro five zero. Takes us to item number four, and that is under the Public Works Department. At this time, Councilman Raboy will have to leave because of the conflict of interest of interest issue. This item is the construction contract change order number five for Roundstone Park, Monterey Park, and Monterey Bay well and pipeline. At this time, I'll turn it over to our Director of Public Works, Greg Halliday.
I think with the council's blessing, I'll go ahead and take the previous item from the consent calendar, D, I believe it's D seven, first, that's a little bit simpler one. This was an appropriation request from Fund 112146 for Roundstone Park construction account. We're requesting an appropriation of $1,528.80 for the construction of the park. And back in July 2007, the council awarded the construction contract of about 3.25 million for both parks and the Monterey Bay well and pipeline improvements. Parks are not complete. We've got Odyssey doing a change order number four work, which is to install a post and cable rail fence on the south side of Roundstone Park to separate it from Dead Man's Gulch. Cost of this change order work is $1,528.80. In order to pay for this work, we originally intended to utilize funds from a savings for immaterials test costs of about $5,300. Because we let those funds go in the last budget year, and we're processing the change order in this budget year, the funds we diverted back to the fund balance, not to the project balance. So, we're asking the council basically reappropriate money that's left over from the park to fund this change order. There is adequate funds in the Fund 11 to do so.
Do we have a motion from council?
I'll move.
Second.
Call for the vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Prove four zero. Back to item number four on the regular calendar.
Thank you. This is basically the same thing. It's a little bit more expensive, a little bit more complicated. Again, back in July, we ordered the one contract with construction of both parks and the pipeline. The Monterey Bay well and pipeline improvements portion of that contract was about 1.223 million dollars. Oil engineering prepared the plans and specifications using as-built utility information rather than digging up all utilities to find out where they were. When we started construction, we discovered numerous additional utilities, utility conflicts with proposed vertical alignment of our pipeline. Turns out that the as-built plans were severely incorrect. We also found out they were lacking, and we encountered a significant number of utilities that were not shown on the plans. Those all conflicted with the existing water pipeline that we put in the ground. We had to redesign the pipeline alignment in order to avoid all these conflicts. In general, the line went deeper to get under most of the conflicting utility lines, anywhere from a half a foot to six foot deeper. And as you get deeper in the trench, the contractors' costs go up. In addition, we had more high points and more low points, which means we have to have more air vacs, more blow offs. That add to the cost. We could not come to an agreed price. When we first discovered there was a problem, we attempted to negotiate a, a fixed price for the pipeline project. Contracters' price was, we felt, way too high. So, according to the specifications, we moved into a time and materials force account. That means they do the work, we watch them, and they get paid so much per hour to do the work. Their original cost accounting that was submitted in July was over $291,000. Upon review of that, we ultimately negotiated a fair and reasonable lump sum cost of about $179,000, $111,000 less than what they had asked for. Because this change order exceeds my limit of $75,000, council approval is requested. We're requesting an additional appropriation, but again, just like the previous item, this, no additional funds are being requested that are not ordered in excess of council's original approved budget. Again, because of the change in the fiscal year, we made an error in the carryovers from the contract and let this money go back to the fund balance. All we're asking is that council, we basically reappropriate those funds back into the project. And that's the amount that we have shown in the agenda report tonight. The original estimated cost was 1.54798. The current estimated cost is just under $2,000 less than that. So, we're still estimating that it's 2,000 less than originally proposed, and that does leave us about a $22,000 contingency to close the project out. We're asking the council to approve the change order and the additional appropriation.
Any comments by council?
I have no comments.
I, I had a question. I have no problem with what you're asking for tonight, but I'm a little concerned that what you ran into was as ill-defined as it was. That construction in that part of town is, I'll call it newer in town. Any comments from anyone on why we found so much different than what we thought was there? And I know you weren't even here, but if you have any insight.
We are at a loss as to why. We, everybody has told me the same thing you just expressed, that we anticipate those records would be a lot better than what they actually were. And that's why the decision was made back when the design was completed to rely on as-builts rather than requiring pothole as part of the design. The contractor was required to do potholing first, so that's how we discovered the problem before he, you know, got half the pipe laid.
What does that mean, pothole?
Potholes, when you dig down to find the utilities. In some cases, you could actually go out there, hire a contractor, and make a small excavation just to find the utilities so you know exactly where they're at when you start construction. In this case, it still would not have eliminated the problem because we found a lot of utilities that we didn't even know were there. Some of them are ours, water, sewer. There's also some phone lines, TV that we hit in the, in the construction that we had no written record. And so, either the plans given to us by the developer back when the track was built were incomplete, or the inspector then didn't write them down correctly, or records were lost. We don't know why.
Who was the developer there, Greg?
I couldn't remember.
There were two ones, Morrison Home, and the other one was...
Was that Presley?
Elliot? No, yeah, Kimball Hill.
Kimball Hill?
But wouldn't we have been the inspector whoever built that area? That's what's concerning me.
In a typical, the way we do things now, and it's typical, is yes, Public Works would have been the inspector. We would have gotten as-built plans from the private contractor working for the developer, and they would have been marked as-built by their engineers, certified by our inspector, and then entered into the permanent logs of Public Works. We had as-built plans, but they were just incorrect.
Anyway, like I say, I realize that didn't fall under your time here, but any lessons learned, it just surprised me that, that's not what, 20 years old, is it? 15 years old? Not, that only 15 years that, that collectively, we'd have been so surprised at what we found. I understood when we dug up Lincoln Way, but I was a little surprised to see that. So, I'll, I'll move staff's recommendation.
Can I ask one question before we go further? What, the $111,000 is a large amount. What was the, the difference in their estimate or their cost versus yours?
They were incorrect in what they applied. A force account method is a contractor said, okay, all of these people, all of these labors, all of these materials went for the extra. We look at it and say, okay, yes, you billed us for a backhoe, but the backhoe didn't work that day.
Okay. So, it's more of accounting?
It's more of an accounting, or you, you did some other contract work during half, for the first half of the day that you got paid for to a different item. The second half of the day was the extra. Remember, all we're paying for extra was another three to six feet of depth that we're digging. So, the pavement replacement, that was already included in the contract. We didn't pay extra for that. Contractors, when you do this, have a tendency to lump in more things that they want to get paid extra for. They will throw everything at you and hope some of it sticks, basically. It's our job then to look at it and say, no, this wasn't right. This wasn't right. And we try to go the other direction.
I, I just want to comment. I hope that some of the people that worry about how we spend our money, and sometimes I'm one of those, I hope they were able to hear your explanation that you did take the time to save the city $111,000, and I commend you for doing that.
All right. We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Call for the vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye. Prove four zero. We'll give Councilman Raboy 30 seconds to run back in here.
He's not running.
All right. At this time, we'll adjourn to the redevelopment agency. Liz, would you please conduct the roll call?
I will. Board members Haynes?
Here.
Hayne?
Here.
Claire?
Here.
Raboy?
Here.
Meredith?
Here. Public comment?
I have no speaker sheets.
Do we have a motion on the consent calendar?
I'll move.
Call for the vote? Uh, second?
Second.
Call for the vote?
Aye.
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 Aye. Prove five zero. This time, we'll adjourn and reconvene to the Galt City Council. City clerks report?
Um, just, just a few leftovers from last week at the Stephanie Brown Trafalgar event. There were a couple thank yous that were left out, and I just want to make sure that these people are recognized. George and Heidi Kerberston, they set up the honor guard presentation, and if you missed it, you really missed something amazing.
It was wonderful.
The Galt Junior Warrior Cheerleaders who lined up in the circle and greeted her. They were awesome. Galt PD for their escort, Caps for the escort, and Alhambra Water who donated quite a few cases of water. I think everyone else was recognized that day.
You know, there's just no way we can recognize you and Boyce enough for that. To put that together as quickly as you did and have it so wonderful. I was so proud of the way the city responded, and I just can't thank you and Boyce enough. It was, you did a great job.
It was a great joint effort, and Boyce had awesome fireworks. He really put that together. But we did it quickly, and I think we, I think it turned, I was really happy with the turnout. I think Boyce was as well.
Good. You did a great job, and Marilyn Earps from Congressman Lundgren's office, and they go to a lot of things. She said it was one of the most impressive events she's seen, especially put together in the time that was put together. And she said it was just, you know, there was just an energy there of the community that she said was just phenomenal. And, yeah, thank you to the people with the water, too. That was...
Yes. Long's donated a bunch of water as well. But Stephanie came in to City Hall Friday to thank us personally, and very gracious, very nice. And we took a few pictures with her, walked her around City Hall. Everybody was excited. So, it was, it was a great event. We were very happy.
And she lets you wear her gold medal?
She did.
I heard that.
She was practicing over the weekend.
Make sure the key to the city opened the front door, too.
You know, I, she put it around my neck and said, here, you deserve this. And I said, well, I think I'll go home now. And she followed me around the rest of the way. But she was, she was just, she's just very nice and...
Down to earth, grounded.
Yes. And she said she's going to win it in four years, so she's giving us more time this time to plan.
Well, you know, I don't think you could have planned that event a year in advance. I don't think it could have been any better, honestly. It was just, it is probably the single most event that will always stand out in my mind, having been here, all the years I've been here. It was the best turnout I've ever seen, and it was, it was just spectacular. The fireworks. I don't think it could have been any better. I just don't. And I know we...
She was overwhelmed. She said she had no idea. She did not expect what she saw.
I thought the theme music really added an interesting element.
That was Boyce.
Showing up. It was great.
I need to tell the story.
Outstanding.
Stephanie was practicing over at the field over the weekend. She needed somebody to move the football sleigh, and so he helped her. And he, and she let him carry his discus over to where she was practicing.
I thought you said he was catching them for her.
That was a nasty rumor.
It was nice. I mean, it was just really uplifting. I mean, it was just fantastic. You could, I mean, I went home that night. I was ready to work out.
That's a scary thought.
No, well, I looked at the clock. I thought, well, maybe it was bedtime.
I, I would like to add, we had two big posters at the entrance to the park, at the entrance to the pavilion. Big, big laminate posters. And one is missing, so if anybody knows where it is, anybody out there, we'd love to have it back.
Don, bring it back.
I was just going to ask you, what's it worth to you?
Well, we, we were going to have them signed. I've got the one signed. We'll frame them. Put one at City Hall, one for Boyce, and over in Parks and Rec.
But it was nice. You know, by the way, the Olympic rings when you came in to the park, was that?
Carson's coating.
Carson coating did that? That was outstanding, man.
Boyce had somebody in his office take the fabric and go and put it around the rings. Carson Coatings made the rings itself, and one of his staff actually sewed them onto the ring.
Yeah, covered it material. Isn't it material? Yeah.
It's, when she came in, she came in, she drove in, and when she got out of the car, you had the rings right there, and she walked, she ran around, and all the cheerleaders, she'd give them a high five. And, I mean, it was just, what an event. I mean, it was just fantastic. And then she, she came down and, and up the steps to the council where the rest of us were. But, boy, I got to tell you, I mean, it just keeps standing out in my mind. And the music, the theme was just, my hats off to Boyce. That was just, that was fantastic. That was a great touch.
What about the corn dogs?
She stayed until, I believe, 9:30 to make sure that she signed every single autograph.
She didn't turn anybody away, and she was very thankful for the corn dogs. She, she raved about the corn dogs lately. And she took, I had a little bag, and she took about a dozen home for her freezer, but she said they were gone like in a day.
Nice person in the world, too.
The Marine Army was really nice.
The honor guards were, it was very moving.
Not to mention our own singer from our...
Oh.
Yes.
That's right. Well, I'm sorry.
He traveled to get here. Yeah.
Boy, he was, that was professional, wasn't it? I mean, he just sang his heart out. That was great. Yeah, I think that will probably go down in our history as probably one of the best, if not the best, event we've ever had. I just don't know how we're going to top it. But I guess the next time she comes home, we'll have to try.
Okay. I'll start now. This is a magical night to remember on Saturday, September 13th, 3:00 PM to 7:00 PM at the Littleton Center. The doors will open at 2:30 and at 6:30. So, there's two shows.
Two shows.
Okay. Jonathan Lopez and Trevor Wyatt with special guest Michael Rappa.
Magic show.
It's a magic show, yes. Magical Night to Remember. It's magic. Tickets are $5 for adults, $4 for seniors, and $3 age 3 to 11. Under 3, they're free. So, come experience the magic.
Comments by staff?
Yeah, just a notice to the council. On October 23rd, Pete Eivich, our lobbyist from Washington, will be in town. He will be here a little bit before the council meeting, and then we'll introduce him at the front of the meeting and let people ask any questions. But he's going to give us a little bit about what's going on in Washington. And they come here every year and go around to the cities and meet, but he wants to come and actually meet the council.
He did say, too, if anybody wants to set up a meeting individually with Pete prior to the meeting, let us know, and we'll help coordinate his schedule.
Liz is going to go over the city calendar briefly.
Okay. On September 8th, the Galt City Council Youth Committee has a special meeting at 6:00 PM in the City Hall Community Room. On September 9th, which is Tuesday, the city offices will be closed in honor of Admissions Day. Also, the September 9th meeting of the Waste Treatment Upgrade Oversight Committee was canceled. On September 10th, the Parks and Recreation Commission meeting will be held at 7:00 PM in the council chambers. On September 11th, the Planning Commission meeting will be held in the council chambers at 6:30, which takes us to the next city council meeting. Thank you.
Comments by council? Vice Mayor Haynes?
I think I've pretty much summed it up with our celebration of our gold medal winner, Stephanie. And I think that's pretty much it for me. I think that's, I think we've said a lot there.
Councilwoman Payne?
Quickly, a couple of things. STA meetings, STA meetings, Sacramento Transportation Authority. I attended this past week, and the, there was a presentation on the connector, the future connector that will tie 99 into 50. There's about four alternatives. It's going to be a huge project. It's going to take quite a while, but it's on the drawing board now. The other thing, I went to the Commission on Adult and Aging. They have a new, the county of Sacramento has a new person in charge of emergency. Her name is Chris Nelson. I brought you her card. So, chief, you can keep in touch with her. And let's see, was there anything else? Diversity Day is, what's his name? Al mentioned. It's a Saturday from 2:00 to 6:00. Everybody come out and support it. That's my comment.
Councilman Claire?
Mentioning Pete Eivich, when I was in Washington DC, the last council meeting, I just met with him to see kind of where we're going next, and he'll update you when he's out here. But Congress is going back in the session, as you know, and we'll see if they get to the type of bills that would affect the funding we've requested for the waste treatment plant. So, if they get to it, we have a fighting chance. If they don't, then we're just going to have to wait till next year when they do. And then this week, I met with Congressman Lundgren and some of his staff, just to keep in touch with them.
Councilman Raboy?
Speaking of Congress, they need to approve that energy efficiency bill. For solar energy in this country is going to come to a grinding halt in three months. So, hopefully...
Got to go to the floor for a vote to do anything. So, that's what we're hoping for.
On the police report, if you look at your website, under police report, you'll see the July status report from the Patrol Division and the Investigations Division, and it just talks about cases open and closed. That's it?
All right. I just wanted to reiterate once again our condolences to the Garcia family in Fairfield. We're extremely sympathetic to what took place, and we hope that his family and the community is able to move on. I was able to attend on Monday Loaves and Fishes to hand out food along with Councilwoman Barbara Payne, Rick Salton from our Parkmaster Plan Update Committee, and Kathleen Amos to distribute food to the homeless on Labor Day. It's a great tradition. If anyone's ever interested in getting involved with, with doing that, can contact me here at City Hall. And that's all I've got.
We're going to adjourn back to closed session, and we will come back out to report any reportable items.
We talked about subcontractor substitutions.
Mm-hmm.
Ted knows all about this, so just quiet. Can you have a...
Don started and then stopped.
What do I change for the work? We have a project with subs.
Here, take these with...
Subs cost is way too high, like double. Would I change out?
Those aren't the squeeze of cheese, which are the half pounds. These are the quarter pounders. These are the...
As I know, the reasons for it...
As I know, the reasons for it, it's forbidden shopping, it's a original contractor, so it's implied a change.
But a large fry feeds like, a large fry, we went for, and the large fry, we got one order, small, not large. I'm sorry, a small fry, and it was all of us, and I had two teenagers. Because they're small fries, like this. I don't know if they're large fries, like, I don't know.
Yeah, we started to. Kind of lined up for us, luck and anything else, but.
So those are the small burgers.
Well, that's.
Brought them to their knee, you know.
All the rules about subcontractors, just in crisis, TV if you can, that's what you can do. I've never, never come across.
They needed them more than we needed them.
So did you weigh all the does, I mean, what did you get, about 100 pounds or 18?
No.
You got to shoot a bunch of does.